Okay, welcome to those that have joined us from home as well as those that are seated here with us in council chambers. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, December 14th. And I'll call this meeting to order and ask that you all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for the many blessings we've received throughout our city. We know as we move forward this issue, this evening, that there are issues that bother our citizens or that need our special attention. Ask that we answer that call as a group and that we do all those things keeping all of our citizens in mind. As we close out the year, we ask that for your blessing, and you've blessed us very well, on all of our public servants here in our city and as well as our military who serve us in foreign lands. We ask for all of this in your son's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of special presentations. The one that everybody always likes to hear, we've got some new employees in our library, it appears, and you're going to introduce them.
Yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor and members of council and Mr. City Manager, it is my pleasure to introduce to you the three newest employees of the library, Denise Jungens, Kristin Jazinski, and Elizabeth Kerr. Denise Jungens is a longtime resident of Pecosin and is a graduate of Pecosin High School. Denise retired from Pecosin High School in 2017 where she taught social studies. Since then, she's been substitute teaching and tutoring students, and she has a bachelor's degree in history and social studies education from CNU and a master's in secondary education from ODU. She's a mom to one son and one daughter and has four grandchildren. Denise says that as an avid longtime patron of the library, she's happy to now get paid to be there every day.
Great.
Kristin has lived in Pecosin for over 20 years and is a graduate of Pecosin High School. She holds a bachelor's degree in biology from Shenandoah University, and in her free time, she enjoys being with her family and trying all of the new cooking trends. She also enjoys dance fitness and is a certified dance instructor. Kristin says she's grateful to be home with her family during these unprecedented times and is delighted to be working with the wonderful team at the library. Elizabeth has been a lifelong resident of Hampton Roads and currently resides in York County. She holds an associate's degree in computer science from Thomas Nelson, and she began her career working in IT as a computer programmer and analyst and then branched out into electronic security. After taking early retirement, she became a park ranger for the National Park Service, most recently at Yorktown. Elizabeth says that being an avid reader, she feels extremely lucky to be part of this esteemed public library.
Okay, thank you very much and welcome Denise. I didn't recognize you behind the mask, you know, I hate the masks. But thank you, and Christine Jazinski, right?
Yes, sir.
Yep, all right, so welcome to all of you and you're joining a great team there in the Pecosin Library and we welcome, I know all of council welcomes you to our group tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a second special presentation, and this is on the Holiday House and Light Decorating Contest, and Gretchen Goshenauer is going to present that, but let me head you off before you do that. It's not lost on me that Parks and Rec has really leaned forward throughout the pandemic. Okay, and the one thing I would say is that you have found within y'all's team a unique way to make people smile and to make people happier. So thank you for what y'all have done.
Sure.
And this is just one of those.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for having us this evening. Thanks for having me, City Manager and members of council, and for many of you at home, since we have been in touch with you over the last two weeks. We would like to thank you for the opportunity to bring with just a small dose of holiday spirit and cheer as we introduce the newest recreation program and probably the first of its kind, it's our citywide house light and decorating contest. We hosted, Parks and Recreation hosted the contest to award the best lighted and decorated house in the city. We had an overwhelming response of over 30 houses entered in for consideration for judging. And I'd like to recognize our council members who, I think, may want to remain nameless as they took the daunting task to consider all of our entries this year and over the course of several evenings over the last week. Just to share a few things, there are many entries that considered holiday and traditional decor, many modern decorations, synchronized productions, playing music on FM stations, and you can even find Santa in a boat, and there's even a carriage along the way. So there's plenty to see in Bull Island, and we would welcome you to do that. And to give you a simple glimpse, here are our entries to recognize their hard work this year.
It doesn't. I can't play the field.
This production here is synced to a light music. It changes, so it was hard to capture.
Oh, wow.
houses that are decorated, and you'll be able to visit the Parks and Recreation City website for a link. And this is a sample of the map that you can see here. Each house is labeled with their address, there's a little Christmas tree on the map. So we have not listed the winners on this map that you see here because tonight we plan to announce the winners in just a minute. So our winners this evening will receive a giant yard sign for the grand prize and a number of other little tokens and a special gift certificate to local business in our community. So we do thank all of those that participated, and we hope that the city and those around us will definitely enjoy the holiday cheer that they're spreading because I know that everyone that has participated and visited and been part of the photography crew, the judging crew, has all enjoyed looking at everything, and many of our neighbors have really enjoyed it too. So hopefully we'll grow in the future and our map will be one of destination to tour around the city and see our fellow residents. And good job, everyone, is what I would like to say, and thank you for entering. So with no further ado, this is what we've all been waiting for. The 2020 winners, the best in show, is Mr. and Mrs. Carroll and Jesse Wood. Our first place behind them is the house by Jason Sebring. Our second place is Sherri Rook. Third place is Dawn and Anthony Martin. And we had a special category to acknowledge things that were out of the ordinary and very well done. In the most creative winner of the whole show, Mike, Nikki, and Tammy Page. And then honorable mention for most creative is Ashley Palacek. And we will be calling those that did enter, we will be by with a sign for you and some other goodies. So we'd like to thank you, and if you don't have any other questions, Mayor, that concludes our information on the house contest. And I would like to remind everyone that Santa letters are still being taken at both mailboxes at City Hall and the municipal building, and those will be taken through the 16th this week, and the response has been wonderful for that as well. So Merry Christmas to everyone, and we hope that our community is safe and everyone has a great holiday.
Thank you very much. And thanks to everybody that participated in there, it was really, really some great decorations and really thrilling to see people getting into it. Everybody likes a good competition, so that's good. All right, third presentation here is years of service and employee recognitions. I can only think of one person here that would apply to years of service that probably needs to be recognized, so Randy?
Hold on a second. I closed, I closed the whole thing. It's coming. When I closed publisher, the whole thing went down. Oh, good. See, how do you get this thing doing? I'm trying. Here.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
I would add one thing that Gretchen didn't mention was that if you'd like to see those slides again, they'll be running on our community access TV channels. And while the contest is over, if someone would like to have their house included, we can take more pictures and add them on to the end. And we're glad to do that and build towards next year. So it is, it's my honor and privilege to stand before you today in something that, like Gretchen's last proposal, is something new for us.
Excuse me. Sorry, Randy, I apologize. Do you even see that or not?
About this time every year, it's been our tradition to have either a holiday luncheon or similar event where we take some time to honor those folks who have reached a five, 10, 15-year type of service length with us, a special service award program, part of the holiday luncheon. Well, obviously, the pandemic has made things like holiday luncheons impossible. We have as many people in this room as you can possibly have and still not go across the fire code usually. So what we'd like to do this evening is do our own virtual version of it, and we, like the last thing, we may end up incorporating this going forward rather than substituting back to what we had. For five years of service, we award and recognize the following folks, and for those employees that might want to see another version of this, we'll include it in a communication to the employees later this week, so they'll have it. But first up, Chad Kajerek with our utilities department, Tavish O'Connor, he's one of our firefighters, Daniel Reader, equipment operator with Public Works, Rebecca Weimert from the library, and those are our five-year award recipients. For 10 years of service, Ellen Roberts and his council is aware Ellen has given us her intent to retire early next year, so we will miss her, but we certainly appreciate her efforts as the city engineer for the last 10 years. Deborah Morrissey from the library, Clay Cooper, Battalion Chief Cooper, and these were the folks that came in right after me. Michael Linsley, one of our firefighter EMTs, Verdana Wright with our Public Works Department, Stephen Clark. They got to pick their own kinds of pictures, in case you were wondering. You know, Stephen, baseball is, I'm just surprised he wasn't actually wearing Orioles stuff.
You don't have.
That's true, too. So for 15 years of service this year, we recognize the following folks. Battalion Chief Joe Breeden, Michael Snap, who is our utilities foreman in our Department of Utilities, Aaron McDaniel, crew leader of Public Works and new neighbor of mine. And for 20 years, some familiar faces as well. Jessica Davis with our finance department, Jeff Sylvia with our Commissioner of the Revenues Office, Graham Wilson with my office and technical support for me. For 25 years, Owen Skippy Smith, he just very recently retired, Debbie Taylor with our Parks and Recreation Special Events Office, Brenda St. Clair with our library. For 30 years, Tom Jones and Dave Callis, two folks that have been fixtures here for three decades. But in Pecosin, that doesn't end the list. For 35 years, we recognize Milton Wiggs. Milton is the one that makes it happen, that runs the team, that keeps all of our parks maintained. And he used to be in the Parks Department, now in the Public Works Department, still doing the same great job. So, but 35 seems like a lot, but compared to where we're going, it's hardly getting started. So it's with pleasure that I get to do something that probably few city managers or county administrators ever get to do, and that's recognize an employee for 45 years of service with the community. For those of you that have put two and two together, we're a city that's 45 years old. So the question that I had to reconfirm was, did this individual actually work for the town before we became a city? And the answer is yes. So 45 years, the last remaining town employee that remains on payroll, and he's here this evening. We did a little bit to get him here, and we're going to show more than just one picture. So if you'll indulge me for a minute, we're going to recognize our Fire Chief, Robert Holloway, for his 45 years of service and show you a half a dozen to a dozen pictures of Robert's time with us over the years. And we can thank your lovely wife for helping us get this done.
You can thank her later.
Some of these pictures, yeah, that's him. So that's when it all began, 1975. I won't narrate each picture. 1978, actually looked younger in 1978 than he did in 1975. Is that ladder truck? Robert knows, that's my favorite piece of equipment. And there's young Mr. Canella. Before he was ever a councilman or a two-time college graduate. I think that's it. So I thank everyone, and I particularly thank you, Robert, and Diane, thank you for your help. People that know me, have heard me say, you know, why does, how's the dragon fly? And it's really with magic in Pecosin. We have some fantastic long-term employees. We've recognized several of them tonight, but Mr. Holloway, Robert, he's really symbolic of that, and we are very thankful for him and the time that he's put in and everything he's helped make our fire department and helps our city government be. And I'm quite proud of that and quite proud to get to do one for 45 years. I will rub that in the face of many of my cohorts. And with that, that concludes my presentation. This time, with the council's indulgence, I'd like to ask the Vice Mayor to come forward to continue this on and move from employees to another presentation or two. Mr. Vice Mayor?
And then I'll ask Councilman Green if he would come up with it.
Tell you what, I'm going to give Councilman Green the props.
And Mr. Mayor, would you come join us?
Sure. Can I stand six feet away from you?
Please, because I didn't bring my mask.
Make it twelve.
You've served on council since 1996, and for people that can't do arithmetic, that's 24 years of service to the city of Pecosin. The last nine are those as our mayor. Now, very few people have that record of public service, and you've done a lot for this city. For example, I'm only going to mention four things. One, you led the city's efforts to secure 100 acres of land donation and establishment of the Thomas Jefferson Rollins Nature Area at the end of Pecosin Avenue. Two, you led the city's delegation to New York City to meet with credit rating agencies. This resulted in the city gaining a AAA rating from standards and pours and saved the citizens over a million dollars in interest that we would have had to pay out of tax money. A AAA bond rating is almost unheard of for a city this size, but we have it because of your forward thinking and leadership. Three, you led the efforts with the school board to advance financial planning that allowed the 20 million middle school renovation project to move forward, and we anticipate that a contract's going to be lit next month. Four, you continuously pushed to provide great customer service for our citizens. For example, when we had leaves clogging the gutters and people complaining, or citizens complaining about leaf smoke, you led the effort that resulted in the leaf, citywide leaf pickup program. Additionally, you led the effort to establish the convenience site trash drop-off point beside, behind City Hall, and that is one of our most popular programs. I have observed over the years that your style is that when you see a problem, you take action to fix it. Again, you've done a great job for our city, and we are grateful. Your leadership will be missed. Councilman Green, who was served 22 of those 24 years with you, wants to say a word or two.
Here it comes. Here it comes. I'm going to do something that I normally don't like to do, and that's to speak for my fellow council members, but in this case, I'm going to do it. And this, I feel like I'm at that point where the preacher gets ready for the couple to say their vows, and I'm going to say, if anybody objects to this, now's the time to speak up, forever hold your peace. So we're at the forever hold your peace part. This month, we got from the Virginia Municipal League, our usual magazine of town and city, and it's very appropriate because in this issue, they talk about the duties of the different elected officials. And under the duties of the mayor, I'm going to read the four that they listed. Keep council informed so that it is neither the appearance nor the reality that the council is being left out of the loop on the decision-making process. Bullet two, communicate with council includes both written and verbal communication to the group as a whole and individually. Respond to council's desires. Honor the majority's decision and respect the minority viewpoint, keeping in mind that the majority and minority are likely to change depending on the issue. And Gene, I've got to tell you, you get an A+ for every one of those. You have done an outstanding job. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you, and we're certainly going to miss you.
Thank you, bud.
On behalf of the city council and the entire city, it is my honor to present you with this plaque.
Thank you. Okay, says presented to W. Eugene Jean Hunt Jr. in appreciation for your dedication to the city from 2011 to 2020 as mayor. And. Okay, and then presented to Eugene Jean Hunt Jr. in appreciation, dedication to the city from 1996 to 2020, so greatly appreciated that.
And one more?
And it's a picture of me, is this one, you know?
They didn't have cameras back then.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, podium's yours.
All right, thank you. All right, a Christmas ornament, so appreciate that. Hey, it's been my honor, okay, and I tell you, when I was 30, 35 years old is when this whole thing started, and a gentleman came to my house and said he was running for council, and I, you know, it was kind of like a snap decision. I said, you know what, I don't, I don't think you're who I want to be, my councilman, and I decided, well, put up or shut up. So I put up. And the bottom line was, I won election, and I'll tell you, in the first several years of council, as your new council member, you know, it dawned on me that Pecosin was not where we needed to be. Financially, we were, we were struggling as a city, and I just didn't realize the depths of it. So once I became mayor, I decided the one thing that I would like to leave this city is in a much better financial position. And that was the task that I sat down with Randy, our city manager, and said, we're going to map out a way to recognize our employees who haven't been recognized for years, to get our equipment and our standards up to speed, and we did, with a lot of tremendous amount of new gear, and that we were going to build our schools and that we were going to do the right things for our education system. So we started meeting quite frequently with the school board and mapping out a strategy to get through all of our schools. I remember three things. One, we did work on the primary school in my tenure, we did work, we did a huge addition to the high school in this tenure. We've basically rebuilt the elementary school in this tenure, and now we are going to improve the middle school in this tenure. Money set aside, and I will tell you that there's other things that the city of Pecosin has been a leader on. It was interesting that Buddy got up here, because I want to recognize him as well. There's one thing that probably a lot of people don't realize that the city of Pecosin is represented on. One of those is HR TAC. And Buddy, because I basically worked full-time, Buddy and I have shared that responsibility, and then he is surely, slowly but surely, taking it over as a full-time replacement. Now, I will tell you that without Buddy's leadership there, Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel would not be what's moving through. That was Pecosin. Pecosin, through Buddy, made, you know, with a lot of convincing between the two of us, Buddy's motion made a difference in this whole region, and we got everybody to follow. I've served with 10 or 12 councilmen. I remember each and every one of them. My entire desire was just to leave Pecosin in a better place. My entire desire was just to leave Pecosin in a better place. There's nothing, you know, I'm a native, probably more native than a lot of people realize, but very much a native of the city. And, you know, I just wanted to leave it in good hands, and I think we've done that. So, thank you, council. And I would be remiss if I didn't say the people like Robert Holloway, who have always kept me honest and kept me talking about things that are vital, that this council, especially this particular council, of which I've served with for probably the majority of my time as mayor, great job. And I, there's, and then our city staff. And I have to point out that Evie is the leader of who keeps this city running. And Evie will be stepping down as well this year. But her cohorts before her, Judy and Vicki and Evie, were part of my daily conversations, and they kept me straight, to the point where Pam calls a couple of them my second wife. Okay? So with that said, thank you for allowing me the privilege of being your mayor, for serving with such an esteemed group of people, and the best of luck as you move forward. And oh, by the way, I'm not going anywhere. So keep it between the lines, as I tell Randy all the time, or I'll come back. All right, thank you very much. All right. Enough of that nonsense. Let's, let's move on and see if anybody wants to talk to council on any subject this evening for the audience for visitors. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for consideration of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of November the 9th, 2020.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve the minutes from the regular session in November. Evie, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven, zero.
Okay, very well. Under new business this evening, we've got five items. First is an ordinance amending the city code, Chapter 38, dealing with fire prevention and protection, Article 6, Section 38, Tac 158, and it's for fees. Randy, how would you like to, or who's going to present?
Battalion Chief Young.
Battalion Chief Young, welcome. Hey, did you, by the way, did, what year model was that ambulance when Chief Holloway was there? Did you get that on that first picture? Were you alive then?
That was the old, which one, the old, that was the old pumper you were in front of?
Oh, no, there wasn't.
Oh, no, there was, there was a station wagon style ambulance.
That's correct.
Yes, there was. I don't know what year that was.
Seventy Chevrolet.
Seventy Chevrolet, yeah. They had retired that one when I got hired.
Oh, I understand. All right, thank you.
The ordinance that we have proposed to amend this evening, the first portions of it in the upper part of the ordinance is simply terminology changes. Over the years, the national scope has re-identified what we used to call EMT basics are now just EMTs, what we used to call EMT paramedics are now just called paramedics. So it was just an opportunity to update our ordinance to reflect the new terminologies. The newest addition is at the last portion of that ordinance. It was, we had an incident occur at our last seafood festival where a citizen was, I guess, I think they were backed into by a golf cart that was operated by a contractor on city property. And at the time, then we realized we didn't have the ability at our level to not submit that incident for an insurance review. Because the way our contract and our policies are written, we don't have discretionary authority to pick who receives a bill and who doesn't. That's not up to us. So we identified that as a problem and realized that we needed something in the ordinance that allowed us that discretionary ability at the city manager's office level to say that if there is an incident where somebody is injured and the, the primary cause of that injury appears to be a city employee or city property or city vehicle, that we have the ability to go through his office, discuss the situation, and if it's determined that, then we would not send that forward for any personal billing for that person. So that was the purpose of that change in that ordinance, or the addition to that ordinance at the bottom there. And I can try to answer any questions that anybody may have about that.
Anybody have any questions? Lady Battalion Chief?
Sir.
All right. Somebody prepared to move forward with this, with a motion on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question that I missed there. Mr. Southall has an injured throat, so I'm asking this for him. On the transportation decline fee charge, what if the person that's declining transport was not the one who called the ambulance?
That if, the way our system is set up, any call for service, the patient is the one that we address. So even if they didn't call the ambulance, they would still be addressed. And we, that fee is for citizens, just like it is with any other fee. It is sent to our billing department. If they are a citizen, then it's written off as a citizen, whatever their insurance doesn't pay. It's hard for us to have the ability to pick and choose which ones we send. And I could give the example of if, if somebody were unresponsive and you called an ambulance for them, certainly we would come out and we would treat them just the same. In another situation, if you were to call an ambulance for somebody else and they didn't want it, we're unable to determine that. So it's, instead of us picking and choosing who gets billed and who doesn't, everybody goes through the same process so that we can't ever have any appearance of favoritism one way or the other based on who somebody might be.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I think, but also, he's spreading his voice around tonight. He wanted to see if we could insert when it says injured by a city employer representative, if we needed to insert while conducting especially business to make it clear that if they were on their own personal funds, it would not apply. It would only be when they were conducting city business.
Okay. You have any issue with that? Okay. Are you going to make the motion? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Pecosin, Virginia by revising Chapter 38, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 6, with, and insert the comments from Ms. Andrews.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we pass this ordinance and we insert the language dealing with official, our employees on official, or contractors on official city business. All right, questions or comments of council? Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven, zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is an ordinance making transfers for fiscal year 2021 for the general fund. This again deals with, as many of our past meetings, federal CARES Act funding.
That is correct. And before we get into the ordinance, I'd like just to run back through what has happened with our COVID pandemic and what we have purchased with the CARES funding. Hold on.
Very good, thank you.
Give me one second. Technical difficulties. There we go. To date, we received two allocations from the government through the state, a million dollars each. Our guidelines where they had to be necessary, they had to help us with the pandemic, it had to be emergencies, and the grant period is March 1 through December 30. That period is closely coming in on us. We have 16 calendar days left. In fact, I just spoke to Battalion Chief Young about purchasing some more EMS, PPE stuff, so I apologize. All right. Some of the things I'd like to point out that we've done, something that has been on the ass for the police department is MDTs. We were able to outfit all the MTTs. This now allows the police officers to stay in their vehicles in social distance without having to go into the stations to fill out reports. As well as we were able to get two more MDTs for our fire chiefs. And that way, we're completely set with all our public safety having MDTs available to them. We were able to get some CPR assistant devices as well for two of our fire equipment units. Those are hand-freeze, it allows them to go and not actually touch the patients. That's a great thing. As well as video laryngos.
Laryngoscope.
Laryngoscapes. I was practicing it, but I know who to look at. Again, that's a device where before, when they inserted a tube, the paramedics had to go in face-to-face. Now this device allows them to come and do it through video. Neat, neat things here, washer and dryers. Every homeowner's dream and every fire department's dream as well. Now our fire department can wash their turnout gears without going to a neighboring locality to do it. Therefore, if a, if a virus has hit, we don't spread it. We can contain it, we can wash them and get them done. We were able to expand our fleet, so we were able to get four of our EcoBoost vehicles. They sit out in the parking lot. They allow members of staff to now travel within social distance while they visit sites or go to meetings when they start up again. One of the neat things for libraries is a self-checkout kiosk. This patron will be ever in our Hall of Fame as the first patron to do our self-checkout with the libraries. And then just various other little, cool little tricks that we got. The little gizmo up in the right is the sanitizer to help clean out the vehicle, so when we do use it, we go through and sanitize it. We've got sneeze shields all through City Hall, gloves, sanitizers, thermometers, and our face mask. Couple of those things that we've done, we've gone through touchless. Hopefully, when our patrons come here, as well as our employees, we have touchless bathrooms where we could. As well as our HVAC system now has a system in place that if the virus travels through, it gets killed up in there. One of the great things now, we've got technology where we can work at home. If in the event the pandemic hits us again or some other event happens, we have the ability to do work at home. In fact, I was doing this presentation Sunday night and said, oh, I need a picture of a laptop. Let me take it right now. Couple of great things that are going to be a benefit are parks and road online registration. Will allow citizens to register their children or for courses online without having to come to Public Works. We have wireless microphones now for chambers. This is a great advantage for the school boards, they use that very often. Solid waste, we were able to contribute 15,000 for the additional disposal. As you spoke about the convenience site, we've also had heavy tipping with our garbage because people are staying home and they're communicating more garbage through the city. We have respirators for the fire department, as well as we provided social services with 15,000. We're hoping for an update to find out how many families we assisted with that. So we should have that in the coming months. As well as 80,000 for businesses, which charity is going to speak about in the future. Couple of the great things, we did hazardous duty, non-reincoring special pay for our public safety, as well as those employees that we designated, like in Public Works because of the convenience site, as well as our inspection team. One of the great things that we talked about earlier, great things we've done with schools, we've also able to do it with COVID money. We've helped them with PPE, Chromebooks, and other items to go virtual, as well as bring the children back. Another great thing is we were helped with the gym HVAC system, which should be completed by Christmas. And that was a combination both through our CARES funding, the schools' CARE funding, as well as a reappropriation from last year's funds. And then finally, we were able to help 46 families with assistant childcare through the United Way. So those are all great things that we were able to do with COVID. So, if I could bring you back now to the ordinance, we have additional appropriations for tonight. Couple of the projects that you've seen up there, the washer dryer, a few other things, came under budget. So I'm asking for reappropriation of those things to two items, one being payroll, and the other one's going to be Economic Development Authority, another ask of 51,000. I'm going to have charity come up here now and speak about that.
Okay. Welcome, charity.
Well, thank you very much, and it's great to be here, Mayor and City Council, City Manager. I really enjoyed the opportunity to communicate with you all and tell you how much the businesses in Pecosin, by the way, are appreciative of this assistance we've been providing. As you remember, in the middle of July, you approved the 80,000 dollars, and we approved 17 of those and sent, as was on the slide there, but we've since then had four additional ones that were the first ones in. So we approved them for this grant funds to close out the 80,000 dollars. But as we pushed that forward, because the deadline was approaching, everyone realized the deadline was approaching, and we had 11 additional requests for funds that despite our best efforts, they didn't come in, of course, to the last minute. In fact, some of them are still getting some of the pieces together. But, so because of that, we are asking if it would be possible to fund an additional 51,000 dollars so that we could provide those funds to the remaining businesses and close out the CARES grant for the small business community. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, so the grants that we provide allow the businesses to do things to, to deal with COVID-19, as, as well as prepare their businesses to deal with that? That's what the grants are for, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
But these are reimbursement grants. So if they, because of COVID, through having to change their business style or being closed and number of different things, if they were impacted by COVID and they spent money, this is a reimbursement grant to help reimburse them for some of those funds.
For doing the same, some of the same things that we did here in City Hall to prepare to deal with the public. I just wanted to make sure that people understood what the grant purpose was, and thank you very much for, for bringing that and, and asking that on behalf of the businesses. I know that you meet with them regularly and appreciate everything that you do.
Absolutely. It's an honor to be able to help them in reality, because we don't want to lose any businesses in Pecosin. And, you know, our small businesses are the backbone of the community, so it's been a very good thing.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Any, if there's no other questions, then I think we're, oh, you've got one other part of this?
Just want to make sure, within the ordinance, so you have the two action items, one for the small business grants and one taking total expenditure for the payroll and reimbursement for public safety of 59,908. There is a caveat that if we do not spend the funds by December 30, we have to return them. Well, there's a few projects that are lingering that we're trying to receive that fund, we're trying to receive those equipment in. In fact, I spoke to the fire chief about a few and a couple other departments. However, if we do not receive those, the ordinance stipulates that we can utilize those funds that we had appropriated for those projects to go to reimburse us for public safety expenditure. So it's just a catch-all, basically, ordinance to allow us to reimburse ourselves for that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any questions of council? Is there a motion to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional transfers for fiscal year 2021 for the general fund with the following correction. Under the last whereas on the second line, almost at the end of the second sentence, that word "project" should be "projects." So we just need to add an S to that.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve the ordinance and make the additional transfers for the, for the general fund from federal CARES Act. All right, questions or comments of council? Seeing none, Evie?
Certainly. Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, the next item is a resolution establishing eligibility for inclusion on the Pecosin War Memorial. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me a second, I left my book up here last time I was here. Need to get to the right page. The, the item before you tonight really began almost three years ago, as council will recall. During that time, Councilman Hux raised with counsel and, and counsel fully endorsed, making some further improvements and enhancements to our memorial outside. As part of that process, we worked together to construct the wall and to put together informational plaques of each of the, of the persons that are recognized on the wall, and, and we asked many people to help us, and one of the people that we, that we asked to help us was Mr. Ray Yonello, who, as you know, wears many hats in this city, and one of them is with the Holloway Moore American Legion post. And my question to Mr. Yonello, because we had not added a person during my time, was what is the criteria for inclusion at the memorial, and who makes that decision? And, um, he, he gave that great thought and took that back to the Legion, which is really where that question should be thought about and addressed, and through his work and the work of the, of the Legion post, they have brought forward proposed criteria for, for inclusion. And, um, if you don't mind, I'll just read that one paragraph as recommended by the Legion. It is the section one in your implementing resolution. Eligibility for inclusion on the Pecosin War Memorial shall be as follows. Residents of Pecosin and a member of the United States Armed Forces, parentheses, active duty, National Guard, or Reserves, close parentheses. Serving honorable who dies while on active duty, performing official duties, shall be considered qualified for inclusion on the memorial. This shall include members enrolled at the individual service academies, in the Reserve Office for Training Corps, and programs, core programs at colleges and universities. If adopted, the proposal then would be to formalize this as the, the eligibility criteria. And then going forward, upon recommendation of the Legion, an action will be brought to council to consider adding a person to the memorial. Mr. Yonello is here, by the way, if you'd like to speak to him and...
All right, any questions of Randy, or does, you know, does anybody have a question of Ray?
I just have a general comment, a letter, or the information that Mr. Yonello sent to us explaining this procedure was very, very easy to follow and made it real easy to, for everyone to understand what was going on, so we, we do appreciate that.
Ray, uh, I will always offer opportunity for you to speak, would you like to address, council?
One thing is that you prefer...
Ray.
If you could just, yeah, so people at home will be able to hear you.
Well, I don't know if I want to be seen.
Well, just, you know.
The one thing that we reviewed was that we refer to the memorial as the Pecosin Military Memorial, and the reason is because of the 17 names on there, four did not serve in combat and died as a result of other than combat injuries, not in the combat zone. And by referring it to as a war memorial, we're also, the Department of Defense is a peaceful organization, it tries to enforce the peace, it doesn't go out there and start wars, we expect our elected officials to start wars. So, anyways, we prefer to the term Pecosin Military Memorial to honor all those in the military, not necessarily in award footage. And I did present that to the City Council, I, I had it a little bit different, so I don't know if it was after I sent it or before I sent it, and we just prefer Military Memorial.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, any other questions before we proceed? All right, let's, let's proceed and make a motion here.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass a resolution establishing eligibility for inclusion on the Pecosin Military Memorial and to change the word "war" in each reference in this resolution to "military" memorial.
Second.
A motion made, seconded that we adopt the resolution, change the word "war" to "military," and, uh, any questions or comments?
Certainly. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, that'll move nicely into the next resolution, which is a resolution to include Vincent Joseph Vinnie Padula on the Pecosin Military Memorial. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we, as we spoke a couple minutes ago, once the criteria was, was finalized, or as the criteria was being finalized, the Legion considered whether or not it was appropriate to, to recommend Mr. Padula, they, they found that to be so in, in keeping with the criteria and have recommended it for your consideration. I would be pleased if you would like me to, to read the write-up that came with it.
That'll be great, thank you.
And this is the recommendation from Mr. Vincent Joseph Vinnie Padula, born April 18th, 1986, died June 16th, 2005. His parents listed as Mr. Vincent and Susan Padula. This is how the, the proposed plaque will look. Global War on Terrorism, U.S. Army Cadet, JMU ROTC. Vinnie was a 2004 graduate of Pecosin High School. He completed his first year of college at James Madison University, where he was a biology major and a member of the ROTC program. He was training at Fort Benning, Georgia, and died after suffering an injury while attending airborne school. He's buried at Albert G. Horton Junior Memorial Veterans Cemetery, Suffolk, Virginia, Section 3, Row 5, Site 32.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion that we pass this resolution honoring, uh, Vincent Joseph Vinnie Padula?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass a resolution to include Vincent Joseph Vinnie Padula on the Pecosin Military Memorial.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve this, and that I'm assuming that we change the word "war" to "military," okay, as we move forward. Okay, uh, thank you very much, any questions or comments? I don't think there will be any. Evie, please?
Certainly. Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, very well. The last item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the Planning Commission and the Virginia Public Service Authority, or VIPSA. Somebody prepared with a motion there?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution, and I get to it, pass a resolution, making appointments to the Planning Commission and the Virginia Peninsula's Public Service Authority with the following names inserted. For the Planning Commission, Bonnie W. Shriver, her term expires November 30th, 2024. For the Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority, Thomas Jones and Bodina Wright, with their terms expiring December 31st, 2024.
Yep, there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve the resolution with those names inserted for the Planning Commission and for VIPSA. Uh, questions or comments? Seeing none, Evie, please?
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the, carried by vote of seven to zero.
And comments to the City Manager, Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll be brief this evening. I, I want to commend, as, as you did previously, our Parks Department for, for leaning forward to find different ways to celebrate both Halloween and the Christmas season as well. I want to thank the, the folks at the library and others who helped us with the employee awards presentation today, as well as Mrs. Holloway, who, who had a number of those older pictures of, of Chief Holloway. I want to take a moment and thank you, Mayor, for your leadership, and as, as you said, you're, you're still around, I still live at the other end of the street, and, and I look forward to continuing to see you and be your neighbor. And lastly, as, as council goes through and makes its comments this evening, I will be walking over and bringing you the presentation materials for the clerk. We somehow got out of order, so hopefully we can close with a portion of that during your comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we're going to start in reverse order tonight, Mr. Vice Mayor, because Bud has to go last.
Okay, um, about three things, four now, wanted to say that we really enjoyed working with you, Evie, and we're certainly going to miss you being here as our clerk. And Mayor Hunt, I've already talked about you some, but we thank you for your leadership and will miss you.
Thank you.
I was also going to mention about the city departments that figured out all these new and creative ways to keep things going during this time, and most of them have, have been mentioned by this time, but they had a lot of new ways to continue to service our citizens. And the last thing is, just wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Green?
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Ms. Jenna Andrews for the wonderful Christmas cookies, we appreciate that, and to, we, to remind everybody that the mobile food pantry is next, not tomorrow, but next Tuesday, the 22nd, and several of our permanent volunteers have gone together to buy hams for everybody, so we will have hams, it'll be another drive-through, so, uh, that's been working very well, and, Evie, we will certainly miss you very much.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no comment tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Canelo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank Ms. Evie for all she's done, uh, you know, it's pretty amazing how this city's moved forward, uh, well, with Chief Holloway start here, and since we've been a city, and, uh, under the mayor's leadership in the last 10 years, we've taken giant leaps, and, you know, at times when the Commonwealth and the country is so divided and seems to be regressing, we always find a way to progress, and that is due to the leadership of the, the folks upstairs, and I know they'll miss you, Ms. Evie, but, uh, due to the leadership of the mayor too, uh, so I appreciate everything you've done. And, uh, Ms. Evie, thank you, I know I'll miss you, and I think I can speak for all of us, it's impossible, regardless of the mood you're in or what's going on, if you call the city manager's office and Ms. Evie answers, there's no way you can be mad.
That's correct.
You can't be upset anymore, um, and I, I know Kim and Cresta will do a good job, but certainly going to miss you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Andrews?
Um, I just wanted to say thanks, it's, it's been great serving with you. I've only been four years, but I've learned a lot watching you and the decisions you make in running the, the city, and the financial position that the city is in is so much improved, and not only that, but what we have in the coffers to help us, and, you know, watching you lead during a pandemic and a hurricane, and, you know, those major things that our cities had to deal with, um, it, it's just been an honor to watch you lead and make those decisions that have put us in the position that we're in, and hopefully that's going to be something that is left as a legacy that all the mayors that follow will follow that lead and, and keep the city in the position that it's in now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and I just wanted to commend Parks and Rec too, I mean, it's, you said it perfectly before, you know, they've just gone above and beyond to create things, just to bring a little bit of joy during a really heavy time in the city, and, um, I'm really glad you're offering that map so people can, can go around, because it's really great to see not only those houses, but along the way, you'll see lots of other ones that should have entered, maybe next year. So it, it's a, it's a, it's really nice to drive around and listen to Christmas music and look at, look at holiday lights, and I just wanted to say it was really touching, and I was glad to see, um, Vinnie Padula added to the memorial. I, uh, got the pleasure of working with his father for five years at BAE, and, um, they're a great family, so I was happy to, to see that added, and welcome to our new employees, and goodbye and best wishes to our employees that are leaving and retiring, and we are definitely going to miss you, Evie, and hearing your voice when we call up to the city, but I'm very happy for people who get to retire and are happy about it, because I think that's a great thing for you to enjoy some time off and rest, and hopefully travel soon when this is over. Um, and I just wanted to wish everybody in the city, I hope that you find and enjoy over your holidays peace, love, and family, because that's what's truly important during this time, and stay, um, healthy and safe.
Well said, thank you. Uh, Councilman Southall?
Yes, I would like to second all the positive comments made so far, and a special thank you, Gene, to you and Ms. Evie. More words to the pair of you at a later date, can't thank y'all enough. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and if Christmas is not your way you celebrate the holiday, I would wish you everyone a happy holiday, and thank the people at home for paying attention to the city government.
Okay, thank you very much, and, uh, Councilman Southall, thank you for coming this evening, I know that was a, a challenge after, um, your recent surgery, so, uh, thank you. All right, um, so we couldn't let Evie cry and take the minutes, okay, but I'd like to invite Evie up to the podium real quick. All right, um, in my last official act as, as mayor in a formal setting, uh, what I would like to do is, is recognize somebody who has led not only this council, but previous councils, uh, through lots of, uh, less than ideal circumstances. I think, uh, it was well stated by council that when you call City Hall with a complaint, or if it's just the City Council churning about a particular subject, the one thing that was always there was a voice of reason to not just go that extra mile. You, you kept us contained with your, your wit, with your love of the city, and with , uh, just a general caring about everybody within our city. There's nothing that, uh, that you've done in your career here that's more telling than the way that you have helped lead this city, and, and you have truly helped. You've been here since 2001, so 2001 to 2020. Evie, I present this to you in appreciation for your dedication to the city, and you and I will share this, and just so y'all all are aware, Evie and I have a pact for your first meeting in January where...